Sorry to interrupt it, Natalie, oh, I see you started the stream, never mind.
I can't understand Lee, what did he say?
He was just asking if Natalie had started the stream. We are live, okay.
No, but like Leroy is and and I don't know how old Roger is, but Roger's pretty old.
But there's a lot more money.
Oh, yeah. Everybody, I, and it's okay, I mean, I, when we've had pets, I love our pets too. There's people, it's not a problem, they go spend thirty five hundred dollars fixing or breaking both of it, whatever.
Yeah, it's a, I was. One of the old vets from back in Mulbridge, he, he died finally, Doc Salem, he was, wow, died four, five years ago, but he was like ninety-five.
What, what's helped though is now I think most producers are getting more used to bringing their livestock into the vet clinic. You know, for certain things, or before they always, everything was on the farm, you know.
All right, good morning to everyone, it's nine o'clock, we'll go ahead and start the county commission meeting for this Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, it is nine AM. And we will begin with our pledge of allegiance, and Brenda, can you lead us? All right, we'll call for public comment, public comment may be submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight. Or at six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven, welcome to call in on those lines if there are any, if there is need for public comment. Commissioners, any conflict of interest items? Okay, before we approve the agenda, you do have an amendment to make to the agenda, that would be item number fourteen. Discussion, possible action to approve a new veteran service officer location in a lease agreement, since that is a contract item. We're gonna move that to executive session this morning to have discussion on that, so item number fourteen will be moved to. Uh, executive session, can I have an action to approve the agenda?
Show move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Waterman, second by Schwer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Posed, motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the August eighth, twenty twenty-three minutes of the Board of, uh, Cottonton County. Moved by Johnson, second by Gable. Discussion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Number six, presentation on bridge inspections by Mark Junker of Banner Associates, and we'll have Mark, uh, come on up here. And give us that presentation. Morning, Mark. Yes, please.
If, Mark, can you tell me when to advance your slides so I can do that for you?
Yep, absolutely.
Aren't I see your last name wrong?
It's, uh, pronounced Junker.
Junker.
Yep, German.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mark, go ahead, begin.
All right. Mark Junker, uh, professional engineer with Banner Associates, uh, you can go to the next slide there, Lee. This is my, uh, twentieth summer doing bridge inspections for Cottonton County. Uh, the purpose of me meeting with the commission today is to give you an overview of your. Bridge system and, uh, the results of the twenty twenty-three bridge inspections. And I did meet with Rick at the highway shop this morning, went over details of the inspections, he's got hard copies of all the reports. Uh, next slide. Uh, just a brief overview of the bridge inspection program, uh, bridge is defined as a. A waterway opening of more than twenty feet spanning a creek, and it is a federal requirement, bridges be inspected every two years. Uh, there is some variation to that depending on, um, what condition the bridge is in, but in general, it's every two years. And the DOT does pick up eighty percent of the costs of the bridge inspection, and then Cottonton County picks up the other twenty percent. Um, the reason we're out inspecting bridges is for the safety of the public and, uh, myself as a professional engineer. I do have a ethical responsibility to the public traveling over the bridge above and beyond. The client we work for and above and beyond who we are employed by. Next slide, Lee. Uh, so Cottonton County is the proud owner of forty-one bridges. Um, eleven of those bridges are classified in poor condition. And, uh, the remaining amount are either in fair or good condition. Seven of your bridges do have weight limit restrictions on them. Uh, three on county asphalt, one on county gravel, and then the other three are on township roads. Next slide. Um, so the priority for, uh, bridge replacements coming up in the next decade, there's seven of them. And you do have three on, uh, county asphalt. And I can, uh, I'll touch on those when we go to the map on the next slide here. But yeah, you have three structures that need to be replaced on county asphalt, one on county gravel, and then the other three on, um, township roads. And you also do have a handful of bridges that'll. Need to be replaced, you know, within the next twenty years as well, um, for those on county asphalt, one on township. And then those, those timelines can change as we do inspections from year to year. And there's currently ten bridges in, uh, Cottonton County's five-year plan, which is a, it's a. A plan that has to be in place to apply for funding through the DOT. And so you currently have over seventeen million dollars of work planned in that five-year plan between construction and engineering. Ends up being over four million dollars local share. Next. So the next slide here shows a map of those forty-one bridges in Cottonton County. The map is color-coded, the bridges in red are your bridges in poor condition. So you're, here are three priorities for replacement right now. Number one is the bridge on Fourteenth Avenue Northwest over the Big Sioux River. And, uh. Number two is on Highway twenty or one hundred seventy-sixth Street. Over the Big Sioux River. And three and four are kind of a toss-up, but, uh. Three would be on Highway two. Over the Big Sioux River. I think that's called Cottonwood Street. And then the fourth one is on, uh, Highway eleven, Old Highway eighty-one. That's actually a tributary to the Sioux Creek, be just north of South Dakota Highway twenty. You can, uh, go to the next slide, Lee. Um, so the recommendations we had in, uh, twenty twenty-three. Our two bridges received, uh, weight limit restrictions this year that didn't have them in the past. Also, uh, recommendations to fix scour and erosion underneath bridges. General, general recommendations to, uh, clean sediment and repaint ends of steel girders. Um, another recommendation to fix a scour hole at a box culvert. Um, another one to repair a wing wall. Another one to. Uh, fix railing damage and erosion, and I'll go each through each of these in the next, uh, slides here, we'll show photos. Of all these recommendations, so. You can, uh, go to the next slide, Lee. So this is, uh, this first bridge here is on a township road. Uh, one hundred sixty-second Street over the Big Sioux River. This is one of the bridges that, uh, used to be at legal loads, but has now received a load posting. Or a weight limit restriction.
What was the address of that again?
Uh, it's located on one hundred and sixty-second Street.
One hundred and sixty-second.
Yep, and that is a township road over the Big Sioux River.
Thank you.
Next slide, Lee. And so these next pictures show the reason for the weight limit restriction. Uh, this bridge was built on timber abutments, and those, uh, vertical round timber piles are rotting out at the waterline. And go to the next slide, Lee.
Kind of get away from those, don't we, now in modern day bridge building?
Those are not built anymore, for a good reason.
Just making sure.
And next slide. So those, uh. If you're following along in your hard copies, be page eleven, we're on now. And, uh, these, these two pictures show some of the worst timber piles on the bridge, and then the numbers. Painted on the pile means, uh, percent section loss, so the one on the left, uh, the. Would mean sixty percent section loss or forty percent of the pile is remaining. And the, the one on the right, you know, approximately forty percent section loss, you can see the rot and the hole at the bottom of the pile. So that's the reason for the weight limit restriction on that one is the, the condition of the timber piles. Uh, next slide, Lee. Now we're on page twelve of your hard copies. Uh, the next, next bridge that was at legal loads, uh, now has a weight limit restriction, this is on Highway eleven. Old Highway eighty-one towards the northern part of the county. North of South Dakota Highway twenty about three quarters of a mile or so. Jump to the next slide, Lee. Uh, the reason for the weight limit restriction on this one is just general corrosion. Of the concrete and, and the steel beams underneath. And jump to the next slide. We're on page fourteen now. I mean, this shows, uh, the steel beams are corroding to the point where you have, you know, section loss and, you know. Measurable section loss on the steel beams because of rusting, that's the reason for the weight limit restriction. Jump to the next slide.
The only good thing about that, that is north of the primary haul road for.
It, it is.
The Kana, so.
It is.
They don't have a hundred trucks going over it every day.
Yes.
But it's bad, isn't it?
Yes.
It's really bad.
Next slide.
Yeah, fifteen, fifteen.
Yep, we're on sixteen now. So although that, uh, that gives you the, the reasons for the two bridges that got, uh, weight limit restrictions. This inspection cycle. If we jumped to the next slide, Lee. Page seventeen on your hard copies, um. The next few slides show pictures of, uh, erosion, or we call it scour underneath bridges. Basically just do it a fast-moving water during flood events. So that picture is, uh, on Highway three. Over Willow Creek. Um, the county did do a concrete repair on this one a couple of years back, but still in need of additional, uh. Put, um, large rock down underneath to protect the br- bridge and roadway from being washed out during a bad flood event. Uh, next picture, Lee. Uh, this one is on. Highway six. Uh, west of the casino over the Big Sioux. Uh, this one is in need of, uh, riprap repairs. To the point of, uh. Your roadway, you'd be in danger of losing your roadway during an extreme flood event if this isn't fixed. I did talk to Rick about possibility of applying for some funding to do some of these riprap repairs too, on the, on your, on your county roads. Uh, next slide. We're on page nineteen, uh, these are, next couple are on township roads, um. These have some riprap in place, but the riprap's kind of slumping into the, the creek and the channel. And could use some additional rock along the foundation of the bridges. Next slide, Lee. Yeah, another, another example on a township road where the, the rock has settled into the channel. There's some undermining of the abutments. Next slide, Lee. And that'd be the, the last picture of, uh, erosion examples. We're on slide, or, uh, page twenty-one on your hard copies. Next slide, Lee. So this next, uh, next bridge here, um, recommendations to, uh, remove sediment. And repaint the girder ends, this is just kind of typical ru- routine maintenance on this type of bridge. This one is located on, uh. Highway three. Down towards the southeastern part of the county. And jump to the next slide, Lee. We're on page, uh, twenty-three, your hard copies, it shows, uh, just examples of the. The sediment and gravel that kind of falls down through the joints on top of the steel that should be cleaned off every year. And then, uh, you know, repaint the girder ends every few years. Next slide. This, this bridge also has some railing damage that, uh, needs to be repaired. And also some erosion underneath the bridge needs to be addressed also. Jump to the next slide, Lee. We're on, uh, page twenty-five of your hard copies, um, this is an example of, uh. Kind of preventative maintenance on a box culvert. Uh, there is some riprap next to the outlet apron, but there's a very large scour hole downstream, it, uh. Be good to add additional rock to the outlet side of this box culvert. And jump to the next slide, Lee. Page twenty-six of your hard copies. Uh, this bridge is, uh, east of the landfill. On one hundred seventy-fifth Street, which is a township road over the Big Sioux River. Jump to the next slide. Uh, this. Bridge has, uh, receiving some erosion at the northeast corner, it's actually starting to encroach the right away. Uh, it's in need of placing riprap along the roadway embankment. Jump to the next slide. And also the northeast wing wall is, uh, getting to the point where it's gonna fall over one of these years. It's, uh, leaning out tou- towards the channel, it's got a pile that's rotted on it, so it, uh. Needs to be addressed. Jump to the next slide. So the, those were, those were highlights of, uh, you know, repair recommendations, um. Things that need to be done, these next few slides here. Show you that, you know, you do have good bridges in good condition in the county also. Uh, this is an example of a bridge built in nineteen ninety-five, it's in good condition. Um, built very well compared to some of the previous bridges we looked at. It's on, uh, it's over Willow Creek on a township road. Can jump to the next slide. So it's, uh, it's called the Concrete Slab Bridge, which requires very little maintenance, they last a long time. You can see underneath the bridge is well protected with riprap. Um, there's been really no maintenance or no issues with this bridge since it was built, and should last. Should last the county a long time. Next slide, Lee. Another example of a box culvert in good condition. This one was built in nineteen ninety-one, maybe had no maintenance. Uh, these box, box culverts are, are great structures if you can make them work hydraulically. They're, uh, economical and they last a long time, next slide. We're on, uh, page thirty-two of your hard copies, this is just a picture of the inside of the box culvert. Next slide. And then, uh, this is an example of a box culvert built in the nineteen thirties. And it's over ninety years old and still carrying legal loads. Uh, it's in fair condition. So you do have structures out there that have, have, uh, you know. Serve their purpose very well, and it lasted a long time. Next slide. Same picture of that box culvert from the roadway view. All right, next slide, Lee. So there's, there's basically three different ways to fund bridge replacement or repair projects, um. The main one is through the big program through the DOT. And, uh, these last few years, we've, there's been federal money, um, that the DOT has. Um, distributed out to counties. Uh, this year, Cottonton County has sent in six applications to replace bridges for federal funding. There's seventy-two million dollars in that pot. And there was two hundred and twenty-nine applications sent in. So I, I think that Fourteenth Avenue North Bridge has a good chance of getting funded, it's, it scored very high. We'll, we'll see if any other bridges get, get funded that we sent in for, so.
And that funny, is it fifty fifty or eighty twenty?
It, it would be, uh, it's a little better than eighty twenty.
Be better than that.
Yeah, I think the county ends up paying eighteen percent if you did end up getting a, getting a grant for that federal funding.
What's the timeline on that grant, when, would we receive notification, any idea?
Uh, August twenty-fourth, they're having a, their transportation committee meeting. Can they, they're shooting to, uh. Um, present those applications and recommendations to the Transportation Committee on August twenty-fourth. Go to the last slide there, Lee. So that's. A very brief overview of our work this year doing bridge inspections and kind of a, you know, general. Overview of, uh, what the county needs for replacements and, uh. Open to any questions you might have.
What is the, uh. Availability of getting them repaired, I mean, what's, okay, let's say this, uh. A meeting in August, we receive, uh, funding for that Fourteenth Avenue Bridge, what, yeah. Are there crews, construction people available, or, you know, a lot of this stuff gets stretched out for a couple, two, three years, you know?
Yeah, it's gonna be at least that long, cause, uh, you have to go through all the design process first.
Yeah.
Um, which takes a while, and then the, the permitting, environmental permitting and review. And then, yeah, you eventually get to the point of bidding the project, and contractors are, are very busy.
Yeah.
You basically gotta give a contractor a two-year window for them to even look at a project anymore. So we could be, yeah.
Could be four or five years.
You could be down that far by the, by the time it actually gets done and there's traffic over it, yep.
And they gotta be out in front by quite a ways.
Yep.
All right, any more questions, officials? Commissioner Gable, do you have any questions?
No, that was a good overview, thank you.
Yeah, that's very good, thank you, Mark.
Yes, I appreciate it, thank you for your trust and thank you for your business, appreciate it.
Thanks for your work on those inspections, that's important.
Should I shut this off?
No, you can leave it on. That's fine, thank you. All right, we'll move on to monthly reports, we'll bring up our highway superintendent, Rick Hartley, good morning, Rick.
Good morning. I wanna say thank you to Mark for all the hard work that he does to give you guys a. Brief explanation on a lot of those bridges and what the timeline is on some of those, because. You know, that's, that's out of our control, to get the money for like the big program. The bridge has to be load limited to get a higher score, which. I'm not even gonna go into that.
Fourteenth Avenue is load limited.
Yes, and that's, you know, it's just one of those things that the bridge has to get in such bad condition before it's eligible for funding. Unless the county wants to pay for a three and a half million dollar bridge out of our pocket, and that's not gonna happen, you know, so. It's just, it's a tough deal all the way around, but Mark does an excellent job on. Taking care of our bridges, informing us on what needs to be done and all that good stuff.
All right.
Okay. We finally got done chip sealing, that was a slow process, cause we were down to one load per day. Because we could only get one truck driver. Per load, he had, he'd come and we'd unload him, then he'd have to go back and get another load, so that was between four to six hours. So we could only get one load in a day, but we finally got done. We did three, or thirty-one point five miles for Cottonton County. We did one point five miles for Pelican Township. We have that done, and I, just a little bit ago, uh, the guy that's gonna do the striping call, so hopefully. The middle of next month, they may be coming to stripe instead of waiting till. The ground's froze, but we'll see what happens on that. The guys are out, uh, doing top cut on the gravels and the asphalt. We gotta do that now, so the guys can have room to blade, to pull stuff in, get road shaped up. And we've been getting a little bit of moisture lately to help that out, because the last month was really dry. We did not have a mile of road that did not need to be bladed. Next week, we should probably start sweeping off the P rock that, all the chip seal that we put down, get those in shape. The new stop signs on, uh, four hundred and forty-ninth Avenue. Which is County Road seventeen and one seventy-seventh Street, which is County Road twenty, were installed. The guys, also, we've been hauling a little gravel, we, where we need to. We'll have more gravel to haul once we get things caught up, like Mark said, we've got a lot of bridge stuff that we're gonna try and. Some of what we can do, some of it will have to hire out. I have some money in my budget for bridge repair, but a lot of that will have to be hired out, cause it's just. We don't have the equipment for it or the manpower. Like Mark said, uh, on County Road eleven, we did a TSNL meeting with. Jeffrey Stout from Austin Engineering, they did the hydraulic study on that quite a few years ago. And, uh, those two bridges. Will become box culverts. will become box culverts. They'll fit for box culverts that way. It'll free up road space because Mark had one of the pictures of the bridge and it's the old high concrete sides and but there again, that's down the road. And both of those are on County Road eleven, so. That will be, we've, we've got a lot of bridge work to do, but funding is the whole part. Hopefully we get some funding of this grant, all the grants that we just applied for, so.
I was over that uh, on County Road six east of Waverly yesterday.
Yep.
And you had a blacktop that eventually, I mean, he's.
There's, there's another, that's another issue waiting for contractors with asphalt.
I mean, it's, I.
It, it should've got bladed yesterday afternoon.
Oh, I get, I was across yesterday morning and I kept shifting now.
Yep.
She was tough.
Cause there, it's flagged.
Yeah.
So, people know that it's there.
But it looks like it's working. I mean, it's, it's worked out. You know, we had a lot of rain there over the weekend and it worked.
Yep.
Looked like we had no issues. That's why I drove over just to see how it was gonna work and then I.
Yeah, they did a nice job.
Surface is rough, but that's alright.
Then that's, that's in the process. There's been a couple times the contractor thought he'd have time to do it and it didn't work out, so. And when we do that, we are going to close that section of road, just like we did when, when uh, we had the culverts repaired. Just for the fact that we have to go in the day before and dig out the material to get it ready for asphalt and then they can go in and repair it. So it'll be closed for two days when we finally get the chance to have the contractor come in.
It's not really washboard and you all know what a washboard is. Actually, it looks more like a egg case filler.
Yep.
You know, I mean, that's the way it is.
Yeah, it looks like.
Only there, it's about that deep, so. It's a little rough. It, it's uh, slows you down.
Yep, and like I said, it got smoothed out yesterday afternoon, so.
Alright.
That's about all I have unless somebody else has questions.
Rick, I noticed that the rumble strips on Nineteenth Street up by the bus barn have been leveled out a little bit?
We put a little chip seal through there to help quiet that a little bit, because I know they were better after they were worked on, but we uh, just did a little extra in there, so hopefully that, if, there's still a nice rumble strip, but hopefully it quieted it down.
Yeah. Thank you.
I know this is state territory, but the first mile going out north of town on eighty-one, you know, the, the chip seal has got a little, listen to it, uh, is that the, the new, the new product now?
That's a fog seal they put over the top and they use, uh, the, the state uses uh, granite chips.
Yeah.
Where we use P rock. It's a whole lot cheaper, so we can get more miles done. Besides that, we'd have to truck it in from somewhere else and we can buy that all local.
But it's rough. I mean, the road is, I mean, they just resurfaced this, but it's rough. It's a rough road.
I guess I haven't paid any attention to the rough part, so.
He driving all those fancy pickups. He don't have to drive. That's a rough.
Okay.
Alright, make sure there's any other comments to make, Rick. Or if not, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Very much, very much. And let's bring up the Welfare Director, Sarah. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sarah.
I have handouts for you.
Just the same on that way, is that?
No, this is in addition.
Oh, okay.
This is what I presented to the city and I wanted to make sure.
I did watch that presentation the other night. That was very well done.
Oh, good, thank you. It's good, yeah. I realized you were, you, I am able to give you updates on a regular basis, but it had been six months or so since they, so I wanted to make sure that they knew what was going on and some areas that were gonna need some support.
Appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, thanks. Um, okay. Uh, monthly report. Continue to have good traffic through the office. Um, yeah, lots of people with lots of needs, lots of homeless individuals have been coming through our doors, so we're very anxious to get six-one-two flats open so that they can um, get people on the right track there. Nothing too out of line with anything there. Um, otherwise pretty typical. Any questions about any of the numbers or data or any cases? With that? Yeah. What we, just a, an FYI, what we've realized, the unique individuals served in the total client context. Um, there's some overlap and some things that need to be added together. So there's a little bit of a software thing. We're, we're trying to figure out, we're hoping within the next couple months to sort that out, um, whether our process and what the Helpline Center is doing for their processes aligning so that we have the more accurate. These numbers are accurate, but they should just be combined in some different ways, so.
Mister Chair, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, so Sarah, on the uh, you just said the homeless, you're seeing more homeless folks, um, where, where would that show up? I'm guessing it's on the second page there.
Yeah.
Under emergency housing or or is it just show up in different, under different?
It, truthfully, it's probably mostly under case management because by that.
Got it, yeah.
Coming in, we're, we're doing the case management and those are referrals that we'll be making to six-one, to Watertown Cares with six-one-two flats.
Right.
Okay, yep. Yeah.
Hmm.
Um, yeah. Okay, any other questions?
That increase in number, Sarah, has that contributed to the time of the year?
I don't know. I don't know. I wish I did. It could be. I think there's just lots of situations and things that are happening.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah. I wish I could kind of figure that out because we had a big jump at Christmas time too and that was, that seemed like an odd time for that to be happening, so.
Okay.
I don't know. Yeah. Um.
Does, does visibility have any issue or any part to play in that? I mean, more accessible now?
That we're, you know, maybe we're, maybe they're more likely to come to us.
That's what I'm wondering.
It, it may be. I think there's just also more need because we're hearing it from other places across the community as well, so.
I think, I think when you're, when you mention that, I just had a conversation with someone uh, that said that uh, they're finding dealing with the general public that things are getting tighter, tighter uh, because of money.
Hmm.
I mean, it's, things are getting, costs have just skyrocketed and, and people are, can't, can't afford stuff.
Hmm.
And that, that could be part of it as well.
Yeah, I would suspect so. I think some people are just getting squeezed out of what they could barely manage before.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Yeah. Um, for, so I wanted to be, make sure we're adding in um, kind of what, what our programs are bringing in. So the Cares ERA funding, I've reported that every month, that um, Cares administrative fees that are coming into the county are three thousand seven hundred and fifty for the month of July. Um, I cap um, Hunter, I didn't get a report from them this month. From impact, we were able to get reimbursed for July, six thousand one hundred and seventy-three from the grant that we have for that. June was six thousand five hundred and six reimbursed for, through the grant for the CHW. We're continuing to work on Medicaid reimbursement, um, and having it's going well. We're just, it's just a process to get it there. Um, we've had some really great successes with clients. Paige is doing a great job. Carrie starts, starts classes this week, so that's exciting to be getting her up and getting her um, started as a CHW. And we're also working on increasing the awareness of the program to get more referrals through that. And so we're gonna start doing some outreach to clinics and other places to get that information with that. Uh, as far as the Welfare Office itself, an update for the Watertown Cares Board, which I'm a member of. We're hoping to open this week. I just texted the Executive Director before I came up, like any update. I, yesterday, he was having meetings with South Dakota Housing Authority to make sure all of our reimbursement and billing is ready to go. And then it's just a matter of approval from the city for occupancy. And so hopefully within the next day or two, we'll be able to house people there. Which is very exciting and much needed, so.
It's all ready to go?
It's ready to go. There's a couple rooms, the handicap accessible room still had a little bit of work left to do, but I think that's almost done as well, so. Yeah, the, it, but otherwise it's all ready. So once we for sure have it ready to go and everything's going, there's a few things, washer and dryer, things like that, need to be updated. There'll be an open house there.
Excellent.
So we'll let you know for sure when that is, yes. Um, one of the things I'm asking is to create an agreement with Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars for the use of the conference room. That was a verbal conversation that Stacy, who's the Executive Director, um, and I had had when we first leased the space. Crestone had given a lower, and it's an agenda item, but just so you know, Crestone had given a lower amount um, for the first year. They had reduced rental costs for the first year, so we didn't feel a need for the first year, but now going into the second year, they bumped up the rental rates and just in exchange for us to use that office, we wanted to have a, a working partnership with Brothers and Sisters for that space, so that's the reason for that. The, as far as the strategic planning update, the Systems of Care or Interagency Meeting was last week and Safe and the Helpline Center both spoke about suicide um, awareness issue or programs and services that they have. For Cottington connects itself, again, I gave that council or that presentation to the City Council and really just to highlight the reason that things like the Watertown Cares and six-one-two flats happened was because we are working through a collective impact model and that's the model of the right people coming together to be able to give the right support and make things happen. And so again, that's really where I'm starting to focus my time is how we can formalize the collective impact model here in Watertown and make that work. Um, where, where a lot of different people from a variety of places come together to meet needs. Um, the primary areas, we, we're down to three action teams now, so the community transformation is really working on Cottington connects resources and what we can do to provide resources for that. Our childcare group is looking at how we can support childcare providers and what we can do to increase some of those slots. And um, also looking into potentially becoming an early learner community and so that's some agreements that we have to do. In some ways, it's similar to the resilient communities to be an early learner community, but there's um, some specific steps we would need to do to become an early learner community with that. And then housing, we're planning a site visit to Rapid City in September eighteenth to view a couple of their programs that they have there. They've done some things really effectively and so we have a group of about ten people that are interested in taking that trip out there and so that will be a trip um, that we'll be doing to learn more and to figure, to get our plan in place for Watertown with that too. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I have a couple grant requests too on the agenda that we can.
Yeah, we can take those since you're done with your, are you done with your?
Yep, I am. Any, any questions or anything?
Thank you.
Right, so let's go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Right. Well, I guess we, it's an agenda item, I can wait, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and move down to item number nine. This is discussion, possible action to approve a conference room agreement with Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars. You have a copy of that um, agreement in your packet. Uh, Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, again, this is just to formalize a conversation that Stacy and I had had. Um, now that um, rent have gone up to their full value instead of the discounted value we had for the first year. Um, we had felt it was right for us to s- to contribute to the space that we're using there. So.
And can you go, I can't see the agreement in my, I have the uh, scan electronic version of the packet, so I don't see it. Can you give me the, the rundown?
Yeah, she'll just read it.
Sure, yep. Um, it's that this letter serves as an agreement between Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars and Cottington County Welfare for the purpose of enabling County, Cottington County Welfare to access and utilize the Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars Conference Room for Community Meetings between the hours of twelve PM and five PM, Monday through Friday. In exchange for the use of the Conference Room, Cottington County Welfare will pay a hundred dollars per month to Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars. And this goes into effect, it's retroactive from June first to May thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion to accept that agreement.
So.
Moved by Waterman, second by Johnson. Any discussion?
Just one, one quick question on, you said retroactive in twenty twenty-four or?
No, sorry, through June of tw- first of twenty twenty-three to May fir- May thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, sorry.
Yeah.
Retroactive.
Okay.
That was a confusing statement, sorry.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for reading it, thank you.
So, I guess the only question that I would have is why is it retroactive back to June first?
Cause that was when the lease changed.
Okay.
That was our lease. That was year two of the lease started on.
It coincided with your lease date, right?
Yeah, okay, okay. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Alright, anything else, Sarah?
Not for that one.
Okay. What else do you have?
Um, the grant request for the South Dakota.
Number ten.
What number is that? Ten?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, we'll go ahead and move down to uh, number ten and take that. Since Sarah is here, it's Action Authorized Application of the Watertown Area Community Foundation Grant Funds.
And this is just a request that um, for me to apply for a grant from the Watertown Area Community Foundation. This would be um, requesting funding for advertising Cottington connects. One of our, now that we have this great resource, we need to get the word out for that. Um, there's, it's just that little, it's just a one-pager that summarizes. Sorry, I don't.
No, that's okay, yeah, we do.
Okay, yeah. Um, and so it, yeah, this grant is just a five thousand dollar grant to advertise Cottington connects through the community.
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Move by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Sarah.
One more.
One more?
Sorry.
Okay, this is number eleven, Action Authorized Application of South Dakota Community Foundation Behind, Beyond Idea Grant Funds. Go ahead, Sarah.
So this is a grant, um, we had applied for it in the past and so now um, we're gonna apply for it again, I, I think with good um, pers- good potent- potential for getting it approved. It would be an up to one hundred thousand dollar grant request to fund um, the formalizing the collective impact consult, consulting with Sage Consulting, which is out of Sioux Falls. They've been really instrumental in um, facilitating a lot of the work that has happened in Sioux Falls to bring agencies together and coordinate pieces with that. They're also the ones that will be doing the needs assessment that I'm waiting to hear for sure that we've gotten that grant, but they're, they'll be doing the needs assessment and then we would work with them to formalize the collective impact as well as they continue to work with Angela. It would also be for funding for a Social Services Day event, which we would like to have similar to what we had in April for that Cottington connects day, so funding for that. And then a additional advertising for promoting Cottington connects when that Watertown Area Community Foundation grant runs out.
Load through. Move, motion by Johnson.
Second it.
Second by Schwer. Uh, further discussion?
Um, Troy, I have a question. Did you say there will be two one hundred thousand dollar or just one? Just one, okay. It could potentially be renewed, but it would be a one-time, one hundred thousand dollar grant.
So there, there would be no match? That's one hundred percent funded grant?
What about funding after the grant runs out?
Um, well, it would be a one-time project, so it would just be that consulting would be here to establish it and then when the grant is done, their consulting would be done.
I mean, I'm just concerned about coming back to the county for more money later on.
Yeah. Yeah, this would be a one-time.
And then sunset it out, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think we've got all your items off there now. Alright, let's move back to the monthly reports and let's go with Facility Manager. Let's get Steve up here. Good morning, Steve. It's easier that way, right?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah. Morning.
Good morning. Fell asleep pretty fast.
Said you fell asleep pretty fast?
Yeah. I do usually at night, but.
Okay.
Alright, good morning, everybody. Again, um, we'll start out with the egg building. Um, had to replace a water heater which supplies the kitchen and the um, bathroom, restrooms and so that, near the kitchen area. Um, that there, the, one of the heaters was a ninety-one model and the other one was a two thousand and three and they're having issues when it came to the achievement days, so. They, they made it through it, but we um, end up replacing it afterwards. Um, achievement days and the auctions is the events has pretty well have taken place out at the Extension Building. Um, Government Building. Carpet on the second floor has been scheduled for the last week of August. So that, so that'll be taking place. We'll start tearing out, um, they had corresponded with the judges for courtrooms and stuff, so we can. So we can be able to get that access to that being done. Detention center. New urinals are being in the process of being installed currently. Also, yesterday met with Johnson Control staff on the HVAC system update. Bids are within the budget estimate. Johnson Control will give updates next week at the meeting commissioner's meeting and then also. Plus to authorize to sign the construction agreement process of the of it. Lee had sat in on and for majority of the time, so we had on that, so.
Uh Steve, just a quick question on that. Sorry, Mr. Chair. The uh is he I got a draft of that that agreement, is he still gonna be finalizing that? So the commissioners can look at that beforehand?
Okay. Yes, he is. Uh he's gonna get it sent, get it done, finished up and sent, and then he's gonna get it sent to me so I can have that agreement and everything all together. For next week's meeting.
Just emphasize, just emphasize that it's, you know, they kept it within the budget that we had planned, so it's still an expensive project, a little over four million, but it's.
Yeah, they had to do a little bit of work to get it down there and so that, so. Park reservations for over this year as of August fourteenth are. One thousand seven hundred and eleven reservations. With one hundred and fifty seven thousand two hundred and one dollars of revenue so far.
How is that compared to previous year?
I haven't really kind of went in to see what is previous, when I when next week when we get closer to the end or next month. I'll get it pretty well what it was for the year, cause next month we're pretty well kind of almost getting close to the end of the season.
Level it off, yeah, okay.
Also, the park and rec conference is in October at Madison, South Dakota. I'll be, once I get a little more information, I'll get a travel request for attending that. The weed department, um the staff has been doing some in sweet inspections. We went and they went out and re sprayed the county road rip rat. And then planning on fall spraying to begin at the last week of August. Now with this moisture that we had, we should have it, things starting to have get a little better shape to get some spraying done. Um this dry conditions makes it really tough for spraying, a lot of plants don't like absorbing when it's really this dry, so. Also, the state weed commission meeting and tour will be in the hills area on September thirteenth and fourteenth. Um I will be submitting a travel request for that next weekend. The West Nile, the Culex Tarsalus numbers had a great increase about three weeks ago. Fogging was conducted for most of the communities a couple of weeks ago. Um we're still monitoring the mosquito population as we add, we do have a community that is up pretty good. Um so we had, so um I did get an email and so I guess they're gonna fog um East Lake. And so we had this evening, and so we had the numbers were just reached over the threshold again, so they're gonna fog, I noticed that.
Where's that at?
East East Lake Drive, yep, around the east side of Lake.
Okay.
Yep.
So, okay. By Casino Speedway.
Yeah, by Casino Speedway, everything in the south. I don't know where their coordinates, are they stopping in because they have South Lake and West, so.
Yeah, North and South Lake Drive, okay.
And then also the mosquito conference um is set for in Aberdeen on September nineteenth. I'll be putting traveler quests for that for my staff and I. Travel requests are coming.
I'm just thinking of mosquito conference.
Yeah, well, that would probably be pretty good if somebody would show up doing that.
I don't know why you'd wanna go to a mosquito conference.
What's that?
Just thanks for that visualization, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, sorry.
I could think of somebody else that dresses up as a camel in town.
What else you got?
Alright, that's pretty well for my report.
Okay, and I know you have a few other items on the agenda here, but before we get to those, does anybody have any questions for Steve? Um review of twenty twenty four budget requests. Have we gone over all your?
Yeah, we pretty well, yeah, we have gone through my budget requests. There'll probably be some looking at over next month.
How to monitor, is there any other budget requests that we need to go over or? Alright, so we'll go ahead and move on from there, and let's go down to item number twelve. This is also Steve discussion possible action to increase maintenance department weekly on call stipend.
Okay, the maintenance staff that usually runs here in the courthouse and out at detention center, primarily detention center. Has been on a on call stipends for a week at a time. Uh when I look back into track and so that. It was at eighty seven and a half dollars. Till two thousand and sixteen, from there it was increased another twenty dollars to a hundred and. I think it wasn't even quite, it was a hundred, it's like now they get a hundred and five dollars, so it wasn't quite twenty dollars. From two thousand sixteen till present, what we're looking at doing is that would be is to increase it another twenty dollars to one twenty five. For the participants that.
That's per week?
Yep, per week, yep.
Steve, could you explain to me? Okay, the one that, the individual that's on call. Are they still working their forty hour weeks?
Yes, they're working their forty hour weeks, cause this is a random deal. Um when I turn around and check, they probably get called total of maybe ten times a year. On the hall, on the on the calls, so that, but it's to ensure them that that. Gives them a difference so that way if they don't have, they can't leave town or anything, it it kind of compensates them for for being.
But you can, you can uh use your iPhones to forward any calls that would come in. As far as your own call, you understand what I say, you don't have to sit by your phone.
Right, right, no, that ain't the basic it is that um this ensures them the the deal that they're here and stay in a local vicinity.
Able to respond.
Yeah, ain't able to respond, you know, you know, less than probably forty five minutes response.
Let's say you have a a broken water line or a toilet or something that needs attention on a Sunday.
Right, that's the majority of it. It's always is a water um issue, it's um. Flooding going on, sewer drains are plugged up, water goes, that has probably been the majority of this stuff. Um they have they have always had to come in. Once in a while, it might be a rare occasion of something breaks that they have to come in and and fix. With the detention center being a twenty four seven deal, there's always those issues. This here is a little bit different, of course, than the extension building, extension building, they're just put on call for an event. And they just get a two hour stipend to be on call for that. But this here is a functioning twenty four seven functioning, so that's why this was put in place and I do not know when this had started. In the past, and so we had, but I just know that from two thousand thirteen to fifteen. Is where I had records too, so without looking up minutes when this was all first started taking place.
So the question that I would have would move this would obviously be in addition to any overtime that they're called in that they receive. This is just on call pay.
Call, yes.
I I guess, I I can understand the the need.
Right.
Uh it's just that, you know, a hundred and twenty five dollars and they'll usually come in and then they'll call a plumber to come and fix it. He understands what I'm saying, you know, if there's a problem and they'll contact the on call person, the on call person will come in and see the toilet's plugged, they'll call a plumber.
Well, they try to turn around and get it themselves if they cannot get it, and then they have to call somebody and so that, but most of the time they usually get. The remedy done themselves, so that, but yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, we'll we'll discussion, second uh motion by. Uh Gable, second by Waterman and discussion.
Is this just for the?
Primarily detention center, they have come in here on occasion deal because of something here in the courthouse. After hours or something, but it's, it's probably once or twice a year. For something here at the courthouse, somebody might come in, one of the deputies noticed something, so they call one of the. You know, staff members that come in, otherwise it's all of it is basically over at the detention center.
So it's it's uh if I understand it right, it's every week somebody's on.
Yes.
Call.
Yep.
It's a hundred and twenty five every week to somebody different.
Yep, it starts from after five o'clock and then goes till five thirty or so in the morning when the first staff comes in. So that, but yeah, it's one week at a time.
It's all for for us, it costs over five thousand to pay this.
Yeah, I can't remember something like that, yep.
I know, it seems like, I mean, my own self, it seems like a lot, which it is. But I know it doesn't take much. If we could prevent something, it could be ten thousand. I mean, that's the other side of the.
If if we have, if we have to, with the way I understand it, if we have to call in, if this prevents us calling in a plumber. Uh a couple of incidences would. Make this pretty miniscule. You know, we've we've done a lot of work for plumbing in the jail.
Right.
It was lines and pipes, which should eliminate it, but you still gotta have a backup. Somebody reliable to come in and check things out.
The only issue that I have with this is I I think that asking right now maybe isn't the right time. Like, is this like a negotiation issue that we can negotiate? So, no, it's true, yeah, never mind, okay. Okay, I mean, it it just seems like a lot in addition to getting a cell phone stipend for, you know, we we pay him a cell phone stipend too. They're expected to answer their phones if. If they ring and right now we're already paying them a hundred and five dollars a month, and you said that they don't get called in very often, I mean, I. Yeah, I could go either way on it, but I just.
Well, it's twenty, the way it is right now, it's twenty dollars, like a hundred and five dollars for a seven day period, right?
Yep.
So that means you get about seventeen dollars a day for not doing what you want to do, and if you wanna leave town, you can.
Yeah, and the only other way is they they do, they do turn around and if somebody has to leave town, they'll they'll switch. Their timeframes and so we have, cause they're put on a schedule, and then if they have to leave town, they'll correspond with another one to. Rotate or switch their their timeframes.
So here's the question that I would have in addition to this, one more question. If we're paying this stipend for somebody to be on call basically throughout the week. Why do we have to pay every employee a cell phone stipend if they're not on call? Throughout the week, why don't we just have one on call phone? And that person that has the phone gets the hundred and twenty five dollars. And we cut the stipends out from everybody else since they're not on call. My question, my question being, so so if you if you're on call this week.
Yep.
But we're paying the entire staff a cell phone stipend to carry their cell phones when they're off duty. So in case there's a problem, we have to call them in. Why don't we just have one cell phone person, that cell phone gets passed around to the person that's on call for that week? We eliminate the cell phone stipend, but give that person a hundred and twenty five dollar on call fee for that week.
So that'd be for the after hours. That having that phone.
Right, because I mean, that kind of, we're kind of, we're kind of double paying out, I think, by providing a cell phone stipend to people. So they're using their personal cell phones for business during the day as well, okay. Okay.
Save a lot of time running around looking for somebody.
Yeah, okay.
Responding on that, yep.
The the overall increase of what we're spending now for the stipend would be a little over a thousand dollars a year, I mean, just to add that. Twenty bucks since we're talking an additional twenty dollars a week.
Yep.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I have another item.
Alright, so this is the park benches, number thirteen, discussion possible action to approve a quote. For replacing park benches at the county courthouse, Steve.
Okay, I uh reached out and so we had to a couple vendors and so that, um one of the vendors, we pretty well do a lot of business with. For like out at the park for playground equipment, um I did reach out a few years ago, cause. I had noticed that the park benches out here were somewhere starting to get tough shape. Um they've gotten progressed a little bit worse, um we've actually removed one of them in the one corner. Cause the pipes are starting to rust out in the back and they look kind of tough out here and so that, so. I reached out to that and then I reached out to another company that that uh that does park benches. And I don't know if Lee, did you get my email that I had pictures, otherwise I can show pictures.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to share them right now, can you, can you, can you see them all on the screen?
Um certainly, right now I just got the estimate so far.
Okay, I'll switch over, yeah, so.
Otherwise I can hand it out.
I got, I got the pictures I can show.
Okay, otherwise, um we'll start out and so we add here with uh um crop. Crouch, um uh Recreation, um they're out of Nebraska, those are the company that actually services a lot of our park. Um playground equipment stuff, um I did get an estimate from them on uh eight park benches, six foot.
Is that the right, do I have the right, am I showing the right?
Yep, that's that's that one, yep, if you guys have it. That would be this park bench, it's a nice bench, um so that that quote and so that. Um was at ten thousand two hundred and twenty five dollars.
How many benches, Steve?
Eight benches, six foot benches. Currently, right now, I'm looking at the corner benches, probably removing them, it's been a problem for snow removal and packing up snow. I mean, with the amount of benches we have right now, there's ten of them, I'm looking at probably just. Keeping those two off of the corners and just utilize the other ones that surround the rest of the courtyard out here. The second quote is for eight thousand eight hundred and ninety one dollars and forty nine cents. And that would be this type of a bench, it has an arch. Back to it, I do like this, it's a little more stylish, I think. And so Lee has it pulled up on the deal, I do like this bench, they did considerably less. On it, and so my recommendation would go with with this park bench, the one from Barco Products.
That one?
Barco product, yep.
Which is that?
Which is this one?
Okay.
Is this a budgeted item?
Yes, this is a budgeted item.
Well, I see that one has less freight and it's farther away from. First one has six hundred and sixty five dollars freight and this one has five hundred and fifteen sixty nine.
Steve, you wanna make that motion, or uh I'm sorry, not not you, you already said it, okay. Alright, any further discussion on the benches? Okay, so I'd like a motion, I'd like you to include the total amount in your motion.
I would make a motion that we go with BP Barco. For eight thousand five hundred ninety one dollars and forty nine cents with one question. Who's installing the?
Our staff will install.
Okay.
They basically just have to put anchors, the anchors come with.
And they're both eighth inch steel.
Yep.
Alright, so we have your motion, we'll get to questions in just a second, second by Schwer, now further questions?
Further questions.
Okay.
What are you gonna do with the ones that you're gonna remove?
Do not know, come of a lot of the metal is actually rusted, um maybe if any of them are decent shape and so that could. Um I'd have to replace a bunch of the planking, I don't know if you know you noticed a lot of the planking, them are warped pretty bad that are on these. So that, so.
What's the timeframe?
Um as soon as I order, they can get her shipped, um in fact, the one here, and so we had has one to two days of shipping. Actually, on it, so.
They must have them on hand.
Yes, man.
Just for clarification, it is for eight then.
Yep, it is for eight.
Okay, Commissioner Gable, do you have any questions?
Do uh eight park benches ever get filled up?
Oh, they don't, but they do, but we have noticed and so they, they don't get filled up, but it's randomly across here. And it's amazing how many people actually you see sitting in the park bench. And it's amazing how many people actually you see sitting in the park bench, um. I notice off and on, when I come in from the east side, there's always somebody, seems like, once in a while, sitting on that one single one that's over there. Um, I haven't quite seen so many here in the lane coming up to the, to the courthouse, but, um, I know that, uh, um, there are some that actually sit on the west ones over, in that little circle that's around the trash can. So that's more shaded in that spot, so.
Yeah, adds to the ambiance of the courthouse, which is nice, okay.
Um, my understanding, I think there must have been, there was twelve here originally at one time. Um, um, I took one out here a few years ago with a skid steer, kind of cleaning the sidewalk on the, on the south side and so that, but, um.
That happens.
That happens.
He took out the bench and not the skid steer.
I took out the bench.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, and discussion's over, let's go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Get those ordered, number fourteen, if you remember, we moved that down to executive session, number fifteen, discussion, possible action to approve and authorize the chair to sign a connecting point quote for Microsoft's annual renewals for the welfare and veteran service office.
Correct, so you have that information in your packet, total amount is two hundred and forty-eight dollar, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, and that is just their yearly renewals.
I have a motion. Motion by Shweer, second by Johnson, any discussion?
Um, yeah, with the possible movement of our office for veterans.
Veterans office.
This is probably, and I mean, I'd say probable because we don't know yet, uh, is this pertinent at this time, or should we wait until new facilities might be acquired?
No, this is with connecting point for the computer license, so this is something they'll need wherever they go.
Software licensing agreement, yeah. Any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, well, I bet.
Number sixteen, action to approve auditor's account with treasure and note monthly register of deeds fees.
All right, so you have that information in your packets, it shows the cash on hand, total assets, the, um, general ledger, all those cash balances, and, um, all the different funds, the schools, township, cities and towns. And you have, shows your fund cash balances, and then I'm just gonna note the monthly registered deeds fees is thirty-two thousand nine fifty-three forty.
Motion by Gable, second. Second by Shweer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Um, just to note that the board will not meet on August twenty-ninth due to previously adopted policy. That would be the fifth Tuesday of the month, and we do not meet on the fifth Tuesday of the month, unless, um, stated otherwise, so we will not have a meeting on the twenty-ninth, discussion, possible action to enact a burn ban resolution?
Talked to Andrew about that yesterday, and he felt no need.
No need for a burn ban resolution, so no possible, no action taken on that?
No abatements.
No abatements, wow, getting ahead, okay, that was number nineteen, number twenty, action to approve claims for payment.
So we have several of those, with it being an early month, we didn't have our state amount, uh, to send in for our audit services, and that total amount is seven hundred fifty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents. And that was goes to the different entities, um, that we remit for state, uh, state payments.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, hello, move by Johnson.
I had a couple more, we can add on to that one, we'll separate the nine-one-one out, is that okay?
Yes, that would be fine.
Uh, so then we also have one for Ann Rasmussen for the, um, annual conference for two hundred dollars, and then we have, um, a visa payment. It is for West Nile Prevention of three oh six ninety-eight. That takes care of all those, other than nine-one-one.
Okay, move by Johnson, second by Gable, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and our nine-one-one is one Troy will recuse himself for, and the June, uh, nine-one-one dis- disbursement will, that we will pay to the city of Watertown is twenty-four thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
Move by Johnson, second by Waterman, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries, all right, that was a little awkward. Um, number twenty-one, action to approve automatic budget supplements, the emergency management's pre-disaster mitigation plan.
Yes, that is for, uh, some tactical vests, so this was, uh, an item that we paid out last year, but we did get, um, reimbursement for it in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, so we have an action to approve that budget supplement, motion by Johnson. And by Shweer, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number twenty-two, action to approve personnel changes, Brenda?
None today.
No personnel changes, moving on, action to approve travel requests.
We have two, and both for the welfare office, one's for the fall meeting, and the other one is the community response to child abuse conference. And the rest of the information you can see on your, uh, sheet that I have included in the packet.
Move by Johnson, second by Gable, any discussion on those items? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, public notices, a possible quorum of county commissioners that, uh, you could be at this week, does anybody have anything? Sure aware of?
I don't have anything for this week, but just a heads up, uh, way into September, the twenty-eighth is a picnic, and you should have got, or you will get very soon an invitation from the first district, and, uh, you're all welcome to come, food is excellent, and and, uh, meet the staff at first district, we support them, so.
It's always a good time.
They picked a date for they admire?
Twenty-eighth of September.
Twenty-eighth of September, okay.
Yeah, and, uh, uh, five o'clock is the social sixes supper. And they usually have ribs.
Where's that gonna be at, Meyer?
It'll be right at first district.
At their office, okay. Just north of the cowboy, up there on eighty-one. All right, anybody have anything else? All right, anybody have any old business? New business? They moved on to number twenty-seven, this is the open public comments. Anybody have anything for public comments?
No.
Again, anything for public comments, no public comments, commission comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just, uh, real quick.
Commissioner?
Yeah, um, so I, I attended, um, the SDACC, I, um, I guess executive board meeting, um, last Thursday, and, uh, that, just, uh, I guess the main thing is, you know, we're, we're, we're all watching these, uh, this, uh, summer study on county funding and county, um, responsibilities, I guess, for lack of a better term, but mostly county funding. Um, so the, the next meeting is August sixteenth, it's possible for, you know, commissioner, that's when they're taking testimony. So that's something that commissioners or other county officials could testify at, and then also on, uh, during the, during our county convention, September twelfth and thirteenth, it's their meeting again. Um, and so that's during, during the convention, um, which will be in Sioux Falls, so they're moving to meet that last meeting, uh, summer study meeting to Sioux Falls for that. Um, the goal of that's, that September meeting is to, uh, actually start coming up with ideas, legislative ideas that might, um, assist in the county funding. Um, the other thing that we talked about, of course, we're aware of the, uh, the, the unified judicial system, um, working group on, uh, basically indigent, um, legal defense, um, expenses and how to help counties with that. So there's probably gonna be something coming out of that working group, I don't know exactly what it'll look like, but, um, there seems to be an understanding that, um, you know, it's kind of a, it's kind of an expensive item at times for counties to fund, um, all the indigent defense, legal expense, legal defense expenses, so, just, uh, just a quick update on that.
Commissioner Gable, I did have a chance to listen to some of that testimony on, online, and, uh, it was pretty interesting uh, to listen to some of that, and I believe that this next week, that'll be streamed as well?
They usually, yeah, yeah, they usually stream, yeah, from the, yeah.
Legislature.gov, you can listen to this, to the testimony, it's pretty interesting stuff.
Yeah, and the, the other thing, it, at that same, um, spot, you can also look at the, all the, uh, the slides from previous briefers. So people who have given testimony to, uh, um, to the committee at previous meetings, and that's, that's, there's, there's quite a collection of stuff there, so it's, um, it's pretty interesting, actually, pretty useful.
Definitely a good idea to keep your finger on the pulse of what's going on in Pierre right now, so.
Last week, uh, Randy and Lee and Brenda and I attended the, uh, Sioux Valley Commissioners, uh, Association Meeting down in Fandu. And basically, the, the thing that we touched on with our, uh, fellow counties is, uh, uh, the budgeting process that we're going through right now, as well as the, just as Lee reported, the summer study, the two summer studies. And, uh, it, it's quite interesting how, uh, we reach out and start talking with these other counties, how their county commissioners are elected, and some are large, and some are by districts, and, and what am I forgetting, Brenda and Randy? Uh, that's a good conversation and meeting, uh, new commissioners, so that's why we go there. And the food was excellent, but it was at, um, Mad Mary's Steakhouse, and we actually had steak, how about that, a good steak?
Can't go wrong, all right, well, if there's nothing else, I'll take a, um, motion to go into executive session, be, before we do that, I do have to explain that we are going into an executive session for the purposes of contractual matters, right, contract issues. Anything else?
There may be action after.
Yeah, there may be action, so, so. Okay.
So move.
Move by Johnson, second by, second by Gable, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're into executive session, thanks everyone.